Meeting of the Orion Township Board of Trustees to order. Just a couple of quick reminders here. Thank you, everyone, for your patience as we are still getting the hang of things. So up there is Julia. I would ask the clerk to call the roll and remind the board members to please keep your cameras active during the meeting, please. Chris Schultz.
Chris Barnett.
Here.
Penny Schultz here, Donnie Steele.
Here.
Brian Bernie.
Here.
Julia Del Rempel.
Here.
Mike Flood.
Here.
John Staimo.
I'm here. Hey, Chris?
Yes, John.
I think I might be going in and out because for whatever reason, when it starts up, my camera's not functioning.
Okay.
So it's not me trying to do it. It's just, I don't know, something wrong with it.
Okay. Well, John has noted that he is here. We can see your name. Thank you for being here. But just as a reminder, all the board members are present. I would ask you to please mute your microphones. I can do that for you, but do your best to mute the microphones. It makes the meeting a little bit easier to watch. We have people watching from home or in neighborhood television. This is again broadcasting our meetings. One second here, I'm gonna. Mike Flood? Mike? Mike, can you go ahead and mute yourself, please?
Oh, hold on. My other computer cramped out, so I was working on it.
Okay, there we go. All right, there we go. All right. So welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the Orion Township Board of Trustees for Monday, May 18th. We're still living in a virtual world and appreciate your patience as we go through this. I'm gonna give you some instructions and let you know how you can participate in the meeting. We want your participation as always. I'm gonna give you opportunities throughout the meeting. There are several ways you can communicate with the board. We will take public comment on non-agenda items like we normally do, and we will also take public comment on agenda items. The way we will do that is if you're in the meeting and on a computer, you'll actually raise your hand, physically raise your hand, like you're in school, and I will call on you, and you'll state your name and address for the record, and then you can give your comment. I'll give you more instructions when we get to that point in the meeting. The second way you can do that is if you're in the meeting, but you're on the phone, you're just dialed in, I will give you an opportunity and say, is there anyone on the phone? Please unmute yourself, give you an opportunity. Again, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have an opportunity to give your comment. And then last, if you are just watching through the ON TV feed or watching on Comcast, you can send an email to board@oriantownship.org. Board@oriantownship.org. And I'm looking at my other computer here, and it looks like they're doing a great job at Orion Neighborhood Television as always, and they have that email plastered right on the screen. So if you're here for a specific item and you want the board to know about it, you can send us an email. So that's kind of how we will interact with you tonight. We are meeting virtual under the governor's current stay-home, stay-safe order. She's, Governor Whitmer is allowing us to hold public meetings in this forum. So thank you again, everyone, for being here, and I'll do my best to try to push all the buttons and also put things on the screen that are of interest. That said, we always start our meetings with invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, we are joined by Pastor Josh Yates, Pinchville Community Church, who will lead us in our vacation. And then I speak at the moment, but Doug Broke and his son, Christopher, is a scout, and he is watching our meeting tonight. So welcome, Christopher. Let's see, he is a scout for, he's needing to attend a local government meeting to get his citizenship in the community. So hi, Doug, thanks for joining us. We can see you there. And if Chris is there, we'll say hi to Chris as well. So we will, Mr. Gates, please lead us in the prayer, and then we will all say the pledge together, please.
All right, I just want to say thank you to the entire board for everything you guys are doing. You know, the community thanks you. So we just want to say thank you for all you're doing. Let's pray together. Father, we love you. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to come to you and to know that when we call upon you, you hear us. And so, God, as we pray over this meeting of our Board of Trustees here in Lake Orion, Lord, we just thank you so much for how you have used them in the lives of the individuals in our community, how you have used their creativity, how you have used their leadership to minister to people that need food, that need medical care, all of the things that are going on, the organization that they've been able to put together. We just thank you so much. We thank you for the unity that we have seen in our community amongst community and business leaders in order to help this community. And, God, as we are now looking at the potential reopening of our economy here specifically in the Orion Township and then also in our state and in our country and even all over the world, Lord, we just ask that you would continue to grant just special wisdom, special discernment to our government officials, that, God, they would have the wisdom that they so desperately need to lead us as we seek toward reopening, Lord. God, that we would not move too fast, but also that we would not move too slowly because there are risks on both sides. Lord, you know what those are. And, Lord, we just ask for that wisdom for everyone. And we know that you will guide them and direct them because you have placed them in these positions of authority over us. So, God, we willfully submit to them today, and we ask you for your guidance and your direction in this meeting. May you bless them, and may you guide them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right. Now, would you please stand with me, and let's recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right? And sorry about the view of my midsection there. I know anybody else struggling to get suits to fit after nine weeks of quarantine? Okay, thanks for being honest, Brian Bernie, Dan Kelly. I'm right there with you. And just want to thank our residents. I agree with what Pastor Josh said. We had a meeting today, I think it was our ninth meeting of our Orion COVID Response Team. We meet every Monday at 9:30. There are 30 or 40, probably closer to 40, people that call in every Monday on the same format for the good of our community. And today was no exception. It's just amazing to see our community really come together and work together for the good of everyone. So thanks for being part of that, Josh, and being here, and for everyone that is doing that. The one thing that we do want you to hear is that if you need help and you're watching this, there are so many places for you to get that help right here in our community. So you can check our homepage. I'll give you an update at the very end of the meeting, but if you're bored during some of the slower parts of the meeting, which would be obviously shocking because these meetings are amazing, but just cruise over to our homepage. There are tons of resources. The easiest one is help@oriantownship.org, very similar to our board@oriantownship.org. You can send an email there, you'll get a response. And we've helped people with food needs, with water needs, with all kinds of plumbing issues, things like that. Our community is really rallying. We have a list of people that are willing and ready to help when we call on them. So with that said, we have a busy agenda tonight, and I'm gonna get right to it. Like I said, I'll do my best. If you could see my desk and the sticky notes and the pages of paper and the three computer screens, if I do get bogged down, I'm gonna hear, please forgive me, I'm trying to juggle everything and try to keep the screens interesting. So tonight, we have a couple proclamations. It's regular business of this board to read proclamations. I'm not gonna read either one of these in their full entirety, but just I'll let you know that they are both available on our website. The first one is for our National Police Week. So this is our Police Week recognition. And to recognize Police Week 2020 and to honor the service and sacrifice of our law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. And then it kind of talks about the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in DC, which we added unfortunately 128 names of officers killed in 2019. Actually had an opportunity to visit there in early February before COVID hit us hard. So the board recognizes that May 10th to 16th is Police Week in Orion Township, and we publicly salute the service of our law enforcement officers. So thank you for that opportunity. And the second proclamation is the Gun Violence Awareness Proclamation. And this was sent to us by a group of concerned citizens, and we believe it's important that people have their rights and have their rights to their Second Amendment rights, but also to recognize that many people have fallen to the violence of guns. So we are speaking out against acts of hate and intolerance, and therefore, the Charter of Township Orion hereby proclaim its protection of constitutional rights and denouncing all forms of violence and acknowledging the need for gun violence awareness. So thank you for that, and thank you to the clerk's office who helped put this together. Next item on tonight's agenda is our audit presentation. Every year, it's required by statute that we audit our books, and so tonight is a time for that presentation. And we are joined tonight by our auditors from Plant Moran. And I am going to, there's an action item on this, I believe. But right now, we're going to get the presentation. So with that, I am going to go to, I believe it's Ali's here from Plant Moran. And Ali, are you prepared for me to share your screen?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I know we talked about that, but make sure, so I'm going to jump over here and share the screen. Make presenter. Okay. So again, thanks, Ali and team. I know you're gonna kind of cover this, and Stacy's here as well, and I think Kyle is as well, so thank you, guys. And I will be quiet and let you guys take over. And then I think as normal, I know it's a little different because we can't see you and you can't really see us while you're sharing your screen, but are you comfortable if the board members have questions through the presentation to just kind of jump in and ask you those at that time?
Yes, that's perfect.
That's what I thought. So I would just ask the members of the public, because again, this is a little bit unique, that you would hold any questions that the public has until at the end of the presentation, we'll give an opportunity for public comment. Right now, this is an opportunity for the board to interact with our auditors. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Ali and team. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And before we get started on the presentation, I just wanted to make a couple of overview comments. I am Stacy Reeves. I'm the Audit Partner on the Engagement, and Ali Hjazzy is with me tonight, who is the Senior Manager on the Engagement. We did complete the audit for the township, and I want to commend the township on completing the audit at this point in time, which is right along the originally agreed-upon schedule as it relates to the audit. An audit is never an easy undertaking, but this audit pivoted very quickly to an entirely remote environment before we even started the audit process. So for your team to be able to be prepared and respond to all of our questions throughout this process in a remote environment is something to be extremely proud of. And the team was extremely prepared and very responsive, and we really appreciate that extra effort during these times because we know it was a lot of time and effort on your behalf. So thank you very much for that. One thing I want to point out within the financial statements themselves, which is not part of the audit presentation, but extremely important, is if you look at our opinion, which is the first page of the actual financial statements, the opinion is an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the highest level of assertion that we can offer, that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. And so that opinion letter, our paragraph is right down at the end of the first page. And again, that's an unmodified or clean opinion, which is extremely important for the township, and that is the only component, these first couple pages here are the only component of the financial statements that are actually Plant Moran's. The rest of the information is the township's. So instead of going through the rest of the pages in detail here, we are going to switch to the slide presentation and cover some basic overview comments, but if you do have questions on either the slide presentation or the detail, we'd be happy to address those.
Great. Thanks, Stacy. So I'm gonna walk us through this audit presentation, which is intended to be a summary of the financial information that's included in the township's financial statements, which we've audited. We're happy to take any questions from the board throughout this process as we go through the content. So the first slide here shows governmental fund revenue for the township for each of the last three years. So your governmental fund revenue would be your general fund, your special assessment funds, capital projects funds, everything except for your business-type fund. So this would not include, for example, water and sewer. So for the year ended December 31st, 2019, the governmental fund revenue was, there was a total of $20.3 million in governmental fund revenue. And if you look at the breakdown of the different categories of revenue, you can see the fourth line from the bottom is property taxes. That makes up about $12.2 million. It is your largest revenue source. That revenue also increased about $2.2 million from 2018, and that was primarily driven from the Parks and Recreation Village. 2019 was the first year that the township recognized revenue from that, from that village, which is what is driving that increase. The second largest source of revenue is state sources. That's state shared revenue is about, between state shared revenue and modest amount of state grants, there was about $3.1 million. And so one of the things that a lot of our communities are talking about, and I know that the township is thinking about and planning for, is that due to the COVID-19 pandemic, it's expected that governmental revenues will be down in a number of areas. The state has released an estimate for revenue sharing for its fiscal years ending in September 2020 and 2021, which show that revenue sharing will be down. And there could be other revenue sources that'll be down, such as, you know, parks and rec programs or other areas. And so as we continue to navigate and learn more about this environment and how it's impacting us going forward, your multi-year forecasting process is gonna be really important to ensure that the board has the right information to make informed decisions. This next slide shows just a breakdown of the general fund's revenue for 2019. So the general fund had approximately about $7 million of revenue during 2019, and the biggest portions of that are state sources and property taxes. That makes up about 61% of the general fund's revenues. And so on the state sources, that's really a revenue source that the township can't really control in any direct way. Then property taxes, because of the way the Headley Amendment and Proposal A interact with one another, year-over-year, property taxes really can't increase by more than inflation, you know, other than if you have new development or a new village. And so we point that out because there are some constraints in terms of how year-over-year revenue can grow or things that are not within the township's control, which again, makes that controlling the expenditure side of the equation even more important. So this next slide shows the governmental fund expenditures. So we just took a look at governmental fund revenues. Here's the other side of the equation for the last three years. In 2019, the governmental funds had total expenditures of about $20.5 million. The biggest category of expenditures is public safety. It's about a little under $9.3 million in 2019. That has increased over the prior year by about $950,000. Most of that increase is related to costs tied to personnel, so wages and benefits. The second line there, you can see capital outlay is also a significant component of this expenditure category. There was about $4.4 million of capital outlay expended in 2019. And that's down about $2.1 million from 2018, but in 2018, you did have a large capital project, the new fire station, which was completed at that time, which is what that difference pertains to. So this slide again focuses on the, just the general fund and breaks out in pie chart allocation, the different categories of expenditures incurred in your general fund. So you're in the business of providing services and takes people to provide services. So most local governments, their biggest expenditure category is salaries and benefits. That is the biggest piece of this pie, about 45.8% of your expenditures are salaries and benefits. And one of the things I'll point out is if you were to compare this to other communities, you know, your percentage actually might be lower in terms of salaries and benefits than other communities for a couple of reasons. One would be that many other communities in southeast Michigan do have significant defined benefit obligations that they are continuing to fund, so pension and retiree healthcare, that would drive that percentage higher. The township does not have those obligations. And then you could see that second biggest slice of that pie, contractual services, 28.4%. The township does contract out some services that other communities might have full-time staff onboard to provide. So, you know, your salaries and wages might be lower, but your contractual services might be a little higher. So just something to keep in mind if you were to kind of compare yourself to peer communities. This next slide shows revenues and expenditures in the general fund for each year compared to unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. In the next slide, we're gonna talk a little bit about the different classifications of fund balance, but for purposes of this slide, unassigned fund balance, that's really your rainy day fund. So that's fund balance that hasn't been spoken for or set aside for a particular purpose. At the end of 2019, you had about $2.1 million of unassigned fund balance, and when you compare that to your expenditures for the year of $9.8 million, it's a little under 22% of your expenditures is sitting in fund balance. Guidelines or best practices would say that, you know, how much should you have set aside in your rainy day fund? It's usually a range of, you know, 15 to 25% of fund balance, depending on a number of factors. But the township is right within that band. So that's something that we would say is an indicator of, you know, you're on solid or stable financial footing in your general fund. This next slide shows the different categories of fund balance. So you have your fund balance, but, you know, some of it has strings attached, either external, the restricted fund balance, we can only use it for a particular purpose. Other categories might be assigned. It's something that the board or the township has assigned certain portions of your fund balance to fund particular projects. This slide shows for the last three years, what are the different categories of fund balance? And you can see in 2017, there was about $8.9 million of fund balance, and that's down to about $4.3 million at the end of 2019. And a majority of that change has been in the assigned categories. So for example, in 2018, the board had assigned monies from fund balance to fund the new Township Hall. In 2019, those dollars have been transferred to their own separate municipal building fund, so they're not shown in the general fund anymore, but that's kind of what is driving the decline in the assigned fund balance from 2018 to 2019. So many of your priorities, you can't necessarily fund in a single annual budget. So the purpose of building up the fund balance is to do similar to what you see on the slide here. We build up our fund balance in order to set it aside for particular priorities of the board, and then we expend the funds when those projects come, when it comes time for those projects. And then this last slide, we always try to include a couple of key points related to the township's current fiscal position. This first bullet is really just talking about the impact of COVID-19, which I alluded to earlier. So obviously, this is a, continues to be a developing situation, and we know that the township is talking about all the impacts that have to be planned for, and we continue to recommend to all of our governmental clients, not only are you looking at, you know, what is the impact short, medium, and long term on our financial position, but what else do we need to be doing from a, you know, internal control or procedure standpoint to respond to maybe what is potentially a new normal in terms of how we work? So for example, to the extent that remote work environments are gonna continue to be part of how the township delivers services, you know, it doesn't make sense to revisit processes and procedures around, you know, how people do their jobs effectively when working remotely. Do we need to consider, you know, any risks from an IT infrastructure standpoint if we're gonna be supporting more people working remotely? You know, and looking forward, what did we learn about, you know, when we had to shut down in pretty short order, but still get critical functions back up and running and delivering services to residents? You know, what did we learn? What were the takeaways from that process? Work, we get better and creating some changes based on what you've learned. So that's something that's top of mind for many governments, and I think that keeping this as part of the discussion will make sure that you end up in the right place going forward. The second bullet really just states that your major funds, general fund, police fund and fire fund, were all within their budget expenditures for the year. And as you get more information, more financial information, continuing to utilize your multi-year budget process, you know, incorporating potential changes, millages, changes in capital needs or capital projects, will help make sure that the board is getting timely, accurate, and relevant financial information to inform those future decisions. So that takes us to the end of the PowerPoint presentation. If Stacy, if you have anything to add, or if anybody has, or any of the board members have any questions on this presentation, we'd love to take those now before Stacy gets into the end of audit letter.
Okay, are there any questions on the presentation right now? And I can't see all your faces. So I guess I can. I don't see any hands raised. Okay. So we can circle back if there are some. We'll go to Stacy now. Do I need to share Stacy's screen, or are you gonna be able to show that letter?
No, I'm gonna show the letter.
Thanks.
Ali's a better driver. So in addition to the financial statements, as well as the presentation for the graphs, we also do always issue an end of audit letter to you. There are three sections to the letter, and I'm gonna cover them briefly. I know that you've had them ahead of time, so again, absolutely available for questions, but just wanted to give a few summarized pieces of information as we look at the letter. The first section, it starts on page two and covers internal control items that were identified as part of the audit process. So as we discussed in planning the audit, we don't issue an opinion on internal controls as part of the audit process. However, if during the audit, we identify any areas where internal controls can be strengthened or any areas where the processes aren't operating as designed, then we do bring those to your attention. You'll notice in the last paragraph, we identify the fact that there were some audit adjustments that were posted as part of the audit process. This is something that's very common. Many of our clients, as part of the audit process, we will identify an adjustment to the financial statements, either through year-end close entries or some unique circumstances that existed during the year that need to be accounted for differently. So we need to bring that to your attention. It is considered a significant deficiency, which is kind of that middle level of severity as it relates to overall concern for you as a board, and none of the adjustments that were identified were material to the financial statements, either individually or even if you look at them altogether. The next section of the letter is require communication to close the loop on our planning discussions that we had with you, where we talked about the plan, scope, and timing of the audit. This letter circles back and talks about any issues that were identified during the audit process where it was harder to get to our opinion. And you'll see throughout the letter that it says there were none many times, which is good. It means that there wasn't a lot of challenge in reaching our opinion and that the... It means that there wasn't a lot of challenge in reaching our opinion and in that the supporting documents and records of the township all supported the financial statements. One of the areas that we do talk about in the first, in the third page of the letter, the first page of this section is the fact that there was a new accounting standard that was implemented for the township this year. There were two actually. One is really just related to disclosures, related to the debt sections, renaming and additional information included in the debt schedules, but no change in actual dollar amounts or reporting. And then the second, it relates to a change into how the township reports its fiduciary activities. And that's something that was required for all governmental entities this year, and it's something that was implemented by your team. And we reviewed that as part of the audit process and did not identify any issues related to that, except for one past adjustment that we'll discuss in a subsequent page. You'll also see that there were no difficulties encountered in performing the audit or disagreements with management as part of the audit process. At the top of this next page, we talk about corrected and uncorrected misstatements. As part of the audit process, there are sometimes entries that we identify that are not material to the financial statements. And so we will agree with management that those entries do not need to be posted, but we still bring it to your attention so that you're aware. In this case, when the new standard was implemented, there is one component of that new standard that would change how some of the funds are reported related to a liability versus fund balance of the Indian Wood Lake funds. And so that entry was cast on, it's not material to the financial statements. The township concurred with that decision, as did we. The next section of the letter are other recommendations and just updated information for you. As you know, we, we try to follow legislative events and bring those to your attention. We've already talked about some of the events that we see happening with the pandemic response and some of the concerns that you need to be thinking about. One thing that we did want to point out is that we do have a specialized governmental COVID resource center available to you, and the link is in this letter for you to be able to follow, as well as a special site that relates to the CARES Act and some of the funding and compliance requirements related to that. So we didn't want to put detailed information in related to those two items as they're changing on a daily basis. But if you click the links, you'll be able to get the, the latest information related to those two items. The other thing right below that, that Ollie touched on in the comments on the graphs is it, is it relates to the remote environment, is we are seeing a significant uptick in cybersecurity incidents relates to governmental entities. And this was happening prior to the pandemic, but ransomware and phishing attacks are becoming increasingly common with our governmental clients. And so we just wanted to remind you that especially as you move to a remote environment, those situations and, and things that can cause you to be more susceptible to an attack are increased. So we really do encourage you just to continue to review your structures. We didn't find an issue as part of the audit process, but this is more of a forward-looking recommendation that you continue to monitor your controls surrounding technology and ensure that you are reviewing those on a periodic basis, especially as you're transitioning your operating environments. The rest of the letter contains some updated legislative information, and I wasn't going to cover it in detail, but again, happy to address any questions that you have.
Great, okay, thank you, Stacy. Any questions on the letter from any members of the board? Uh, I see Donnie's hand up.
Just real quick, Stacy, on page two, where it talks about adjustments related to capital assets, cash accrued liability, are you talking about journal entries there? I mean, can you put that in length?
Yeah, so as part of the audit process, if we identify a journal entry, then we have to report that to you.
And so you, you were able to say, okay, you, you found an internal entry, and then if there was based on a spreadsheet that wasn't a, a internal spreadsheet, is that what you, is that what you're saying there? If you could just explain to me what that sentence means, that's all I'm asking.
Yep, so the second sentence talks about the fact that there were some journal entries that were reported for various components of the general ledger. So it's related capital assets as well as cash and some fiduciary activity. Then this, the third sentence actually refers to the fact that their township currently uses a spreadsheet related to its compensated absence liability. So second vacation liability is prepared from a spreadsheet. And our recommendation is that there's just a second level of review on that spreadsheet. So it's two separate components that we're pulling together into that one paragraph. Thank you.
Okay. Mike, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank Ollie and Stacy for doing an excellent job. You guys always do a great job for us. And I do realize that this is two thousand and nineteen we're talking about now. Now we're in the second quarter of two thousand and twenty, and as you both very clearly stated, we're in uncharted waters right now. And watching the news and seeing all the other accounts of the missed fatalities in the state, plus the state. We don't know where we're going to be down the road here. So I, for one, am going to be very cautious on how we do any more projects or capital expenditures or anything right now until we finally get a handle on what's going on. And, you know, we got ten employees laid off. First time, first time I've lived here to know that we've laid off township employees. I know reduced headcount in the past by not filling jobs and things, but, but thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Stacy, is this your first remote audit that Plant Moran has conducted here? It is the first that we've conducted for the township, and, and because of the timing of the audit, you were one of the lucky firsts to go through the process for the firm. So congratulations. Yeah, I, I don't want to win, but.
Well, I think it was outstanding, and we did switch gears pretty quickly. I felt it was very important to stay on course for the timing of the audit. And I was thankful to be able to work with Barb and helping get that facilitated with Kyle, so that we could work remotely, but also that all the documents would have a shared location to get those uploaded to you guys in a timely manner. This has been phenomenal to work in this environment, and I think all of the employees have appreciated how professional Plant Moran has been. I, I want to particularly give a shout out to Barb Armstrong. She really does an outstanding job, and, and we like an audit. We like to have our books looked at. I think it's really important for the community to see that, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments or questions from the board? John, go ahead.
I had just a couple of quick questions. Stacy, in your letter, you talked about Public Act fifty-seven, how it did away with all those separate acts, especially in our case, I'm concerned about the Corridor Improvement Authority and the DDA. Did those come back basically the same under Public Act fifty-seven of two thousand and eighteen?
Yes. So what it did is it just consolidated all of the separate guidance into one act before you would have to look at each individual act in order to determine, you know, what some of the requirements were. So what this did is it took all of them and consolidated some of the requirements. And the, the key here is there's additional reporting requirements, requirements for each of those districts that are now required under the new act. So it didn't change districts themselves or the activities that the districts are allowed to take on and, and do. It just changed some of the reporting requirements for them and consolidated that.
Okay, thanks about that. And just a final comment, I always love these audits. I think Plant Moran over the years, you know, I've been here a long time, has done a great job, I appreciate it. We even went with somebody else for a little while, I remember that, and definitely was not satisfied with that, with what we ended up getting compared to the thoroughness of this and, and the way it gets reported to us so that we can understand it. So I just wanted to say, since this is probably the last time I'll see you guys for this little audit report, I want to thank you for all those good years of service. And again, another good audit here, it looks very thorough and, and like I say, understandable for a trustee like me. And you guys are always available when I have questions and stuff like that, so I do have appreciated that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you guys have been great to work with, I agree. The, I guess just the only question I have too is just, and, and you touched on it a little bit, but you say you don't review, you, you recommend, you don't make recommendations. I think it's kind of how you said it, Stacy. But you recommend that we review our year-end closing procedures to ensure adequate reviews of supporting schedules and so on, so.
We don't issue an opinion on internal controls, but if we identify areas where they have an opportunity to be strengthened, then we do make recommendations.
Okay.
Yeah.
More to come on that, I guess, right? We can talk to you more about that?
Yeah, from time to time, as the township's considering making changes to its processes, we're happy to talk through those. We can't design them for you, but we're absolutely happy to be part of that conversation.
Okay, great. Okay, any other questions from the board? I thought we had it on here. Penny, is it on here to formally accept the audit?
It's not necessary. They'll file the information for us with the state, and then Barb will upload what she needs to. But you can do a receive and file if you want, it hasn't been done in the past.
Okay, that's fine. I thought, I, I just remember we did it at one point, but I guess we didn't. Okay, are there any, is there any questions from the public, anyone that's listening right now? And again, we'll go to kind of the way we, we said we would do this. I'm going to make myself the presenter again. So we take off that screen for a minute, and we'll go to, I don't see any members of the public on video. So we will go next to, does any member of the public want to give public comment this on the phone? You can unmute yourself right now or ask a question, I guess, we'd also say it that way. Anyone? Hearing no one. We'll look at the email inbox at theboard@orienttownship.org, and there's no emails regarding this. So I would echo what John said, except I'm going to be hopefully working with you in the future again. But thank you for your thoroughness and your partnership with the township. And I have no idea, I swear I'm not in a disco, but it seems like my light thinks I am, and so I apologize if that's distracting. If I just get my head just right, the camera will stop adjusting. But anyway, yeah, thank you, thank you both for being here, and Kyle as well. And we appreciate it, and we look forward to future discussions with you. And with that, since we don't have to take any formal action on that, we will move on to approval of the bills. And I will, thank you. Donnie, go ahead, you had your hand up?
I was going to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so you, so we're not going to make a motion to receive and file the audit report and the letter? I don't know, it just seems like we should at least make a motion to do so. So I'm making that motion.
Okay.
Support.
Moved by Steele, supported by Schultz. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, passed a seven zero. Okay, next item is approval of the bills. And we can see you, John, by the way, so whatever you did worked, thank you. Looked good. I put the suit on, I just didn't do the tie, I don't know. All right, so tonight, here's the, the board bill run. Entertain a motion. Donnie, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills and the total amount of seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, twenty-one dollars and thirty-three cents, and just a couple comments.
Support. Supported by Flood, and go ahead with your comments.
Part of the bills were, was a water bill for two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. We had safety path, Clerks and Row, East Clerks and Row is being built and for twenty-one thousand, and Indian Wood, the path going west of Jocelyn, that was fourteen thousand. And then, sorry to say, but the refunds for classes and sponsorships for Parks and Rec, this bill run was fourteen thousand dollars based on canceling most of the classes for spring and summer. Thank you, that's my report.
Go ahead, Penny.
I just want to thank Tandem Graves in the clerk's office, she's the payroll and accounts payable clerk. She's doing an outstanding job in this remote environment, and Donnie and I are processing those bills in a timely manner. And again, it is difficult to return those fees for Parks and Rec. We were hopeful to have those programs in place, but soon we'll be able to get those implemented again.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing no hands, and I would ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Del Rempel, then Flood?
Yes.
Yes.
Simoes, then Barnett?
Yes.
Yes.
Schultz, yes. Steel, then Bernie?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the bills are paid, that passes seven zero. And again, I'll try to keep stuff on the screen the best I can. All this stuff is available for you to review on our website. And you can click on board, and you'll be able to pull up the agenda and all of the documents that we are looking at from your home. Next item on tonight's, Jenna's public comment. We offer the board, the members of the public to address the board during agenda items, but also for anything that's not on the agenda, this would be an opportunity. Yes, so you keep your comments to three minutes, because you can see we still have some work to do. So I will first look at the screen and see, I don't see any members of the public besides our board and our attorney. So I would entertain anyone that's on the call that might want to give comments, if go ahead and unmute yourself now, and I'll wait just a moment. And I hear no one, and then we'll. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, there's not real order going on, I'm not sure if anyone was also waiting, so.
I can see your name, it's Lori Lynch, hi Lori.
Yeah, hi, thanks, yeah, Lori Lynch. I just wanted to clarify, the gun violence awareness proclamation, the goal is really to present a unified front with open county. There's twenty-three other communities observing this on June fifth, and it's also known as National Wear Orange Day. So if you can, maybe update a profile picture with your orange shirt on, asking for awareness about the victims and the families and the survivors of gun violence. And I'll be getting the word out, so if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank, thank, thank you Lori for, for sending that to us and for jumping in, and I am admittedly struggling with multiple screens and trying to keep things balanced here, so thank you for, for, for sending that in and clarifying that. There is a, there is a comment on the chat, I forgot to say the chat bubble. The chat bubble, there's a comment I'll read from Michelle Arquette Palermo, says, "Thank you for all you are doing, each and every one of you are doing an excellent job." Thank you, Michelle. Again, that is one more way you can, can reach us, I forgot to say that, or I think I might have forgot this time at least. You can type in the chat bubble on the go-to meeting if you are logged into the meeting here on our, on our webs, on the website. I don't see any emails in the board at Orient Township. There is one comment about the nuisance ordinance, so we'll wait to read that at that time, reference that at that time. With that, go ahead Penny.
I apologize, sorry to interrupt. Lori, was Lieutenant Todd able to reach out to you? He had some items for your group. Yeah, he, they did call, but they weren't dropped off. So it's, we're still sorting out, the Moms Demand Action might have a protocol for what to do with those. So yeah, the trigger locks will be a great asset for people if they should happen to need one. Again, the whole goal is practicing smart gun ownership and keeping them locked and safe. You have my contact information, if I can help facilitate that, please let me know. Excellent, thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. I'll just see, just pause for one more minute, is there anyone else that wanted to give public comment? Uh, I'll just see, just pause for one more minute. Is there anyone else that wanted to give public comment? Okay, we will move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Um, are there any proposed changes? I don't have any, uh, in front of me.
I do. Um, so Chris, we're gonna add the, uh, the Charter Township of Orion, County of Oakland, Board of Trustees Resolution to Declare State of Emergency to extend that. And we'll add that under, um, consent, I believe. Or perhaps pending, whichever the board decides. But that's to extend those emergency orders, um, to take those steps necessary to authorize a supervisor to make those decisions.
Thank you Penny. I have, I printed it. Here it is. I just didn't have it in the right spot. Okay. And I can open that up. We'll add that, um, do you want to add that to consent or do you want to add that to pending, Penny?
Let's do pending since it's a resolution.
Okay, so that'll be ten, uh, C.
Thank you.
Any other proposed changes or a motion to approve is amended?
Supervisor, I've moved to approve the, uh, agenda as amended.
Support.
Okay. All right, any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, we have, um, we have an agenda. That takes us to tonight's consent agenda. It's a mouthful. Uh, consists of the following things. We'll be voting on all of these, uh, with one vote, all these items. Uh, we have the approval of our, uh, minutes for our special meeting on April thirtieth. We have the approval from our, uh, of our minutes from our regular meeting on May fourth. Our special meeting on May eighth, those minutes as well. Our two thousand twenty West Nile virus program, uh, that we participate with through the county, which I'll talk about in a moment, or Jeff Kent if you would like. And then, um, a resolution receiving cell tower revenue. Um, so I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I moved.
Okay.
Bar.
I heard, um, Steele move it and I heard, uh, Bernie support it first.
It was John. I think it was John.
It was Bernie.
It was Bernie, I thought. Okay, um, questions, comments, discussion? Um. You don't have to Jeff, but if you'd like to, do you want to talk about the West Nile program?
Sure, once again, we're participating member, uh, along with the majority of Oakland County. Our, uh, award again this year is roughly the same as last year, about fifty-six hundred bucks, of which we purchased the, uh, uh, the, the mosquito pucks, lotions, uh, wipes. Uh, we just have to kinda get together and maybe do it a little differently this year as far as, uh, uh, getting those to the public, which we'll work through. But, uh, it's a good program and I will tell you that every bit of stock that we get in year after year is completely gone. I never have any left over, so I, I, I do realize it's a popular program, so. Thanks.
I just wanna give Jeff a shout out because he's the one that really, um, kinda brought this program to us back in third, seven years ago. So, uh, great program. Uh, we need a motion. It is a reimbursable expense through the county. Um. Do I see any hands or hear anybody? I don't.
I, I believe that's part of the consent. We're talking about the consent area.
Yeah.
We sure are, we sure are. I can't, all right, that's my limit, I guess. All right, thank you Jeff for the update. We already have a motion. Thank you. Uh, we will have pucks, uh, as Jeff mentioned, um, and mosquito spray. Um, we'll be working, we're actually gonna be working to schedule a virtual homeowners association forum, uh, in the next couple of weeks here. Uh, probably a few weeks, uh, we'll talk about how we can get out that, um, important, uh, mosquito repellent to combat the West Nile virus. Um, any other comments, questions on any consent agenda items from the board? Sorry for my brief mental lapse. I, I, any, I don't see any members of the public on the video except for Jeff, who's in, uh, our DPS director. There's nothing in the chat bubble on this. Anyone else want to give public comment on anything on the consent agenda? Let me click on this screen and see. There's no emails, uh, the board email. Uh, so Clerk Schultz, would you please call the roll?
Barnett and Schultz?
Yes.
Yes, Steele and Bernie?
Yes.
Del Rimpled and Flood? Oh, so sorry. Del Rimpled and Flood?
Yes.
Dymo?
Yes.
Sorry, Brian.
Okay, um. Thank you. Trying to keep my pen up with my mouse here. All right, that takes us to tonight's pending business, which, um, this is weird sitting in your office by yourself doing this. Um, next item is, uh, uh, first item on pending is item ten A, which is our, um, first reading of a nuisance ordinance. And as you will recall, we have discussed this a couple times. Um, and our township attorney has drafted a, uh, rough draft of the nuisance ordinance. Um, if you recall, the purpose of this is to do, be able to do a few things, but one thing it would allow us to address, uh, would be, um, ice bubblers and agitators. Uh, and you can see there was some language added, um, uh, from the original draft that we first used to discuss this. Uh, and it's in red and it says, "For the purposes of this discussion, the section, the bubbling system shall be mechanical devices," so on. But basically it defines, uh, what, what those systems would be. Uh, outlines kind of, um, what we can do in order to, um, hopefully protect people's opportunities and rights to access their lakes and to use them in the wintertime, but also, um, allow people to safely, uh, and per the manufacturer's recommendations, use, um, systems to protect their property. So that's kinda where we're at on this. We've had a couple of discussions about it. I know, um, I do see, um, a resident, um, Mr. Hart's here. Uh, I think Mr. Husk as well, who have been, um, helpful in kind of educating us on some of the issues that they're experiencing out on their lake. So with that, I'd entertain some discussion and/or a motion from the board again tonight is a first reading. Uh, would be published for second reading, uh, and I would entertain a motion right now. Uh, Clerk Schultz.
Um, just a couple of things if I may, uh, to the attorney. Um, Dan, would you recommend June fifteenth or July sixth for second reading and possible adoption?
Hey, why don't we make it July sixth?
Okay, thank you. And Chris, would this be an appropriate time to, um, note that there's a letter from a resident that was presented to the, um, the board email?
No, I think it's, that would come, uh, during the, um, public comments. So we'll have a motion support. We'll have discussion from the board and questions, then we would go to public comment.
Very good. Then I'll make a motion to declare the first reading held and direct the clerk to publish for second reading and possible adoption on July sixth, twenty twenty.
Support.
Okay. All right, uh, any comments or questions from the board or discussion? Dan did strike some language, um, he added a little bit of definition there. Um, John had some good comments on this the first time through, looking at my notes from that meeting. Um. Donnie, go ahead.
Um, I just, I guess was concerned about, uh, having these bubblers there, like you had mentioned that there was a bunch on Lake Orion. And that when you put this verbiage in there, does it make it, uh, difficult to monitor and regulate on the lake? Because you're not just talking one lake, you're talking, what do we, forty-two lakes? And you're talking, you know, a marine division that monitors Lake Orion. Are they gonna be now, um, the bubbler police? And so I just wanna be concerned about, um, being able to actually, um, um, enforce it is the word I was looking for. So, um, and I thought that that's why the first reading or the first nuisance, um, um, draft didn't have it so specific. So I'm, I'm reluctant about approving this based on those previous comments and concerns. That's my comment. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's a great, great comment. I think, um, I mean, I, I'll let Dan Kelly jump in as well. Um, but, I mean, remember that, if you remember back, the goal here in Orient Township, as long as I'll be involved here, is to not, uh, generate revenue from writing tickets to our residents. It's to get compliance. And the great news is, um, our current building official and the previous two, since I've been here in eight years, have had the same kind of mindset. And we really, absolutely, you know, we use it, use our, our organs as a tool to bring compliance and not write a bunch of tickets. It needs to be something that can be enforced, um, which I, you know, I'm confident that this is, uh, something that can do that. Um, but it's, but right now what we've heard and we've, we've attempted to assist these residents over the last two winters. Um, and we haven't been able to because we haven't had any, had the right tool in our toolbox to do that. So, um, there is some, I mean, the way I read this is it's not completely, uh, I mean, there, there's some room for interpretation. I mean, I, I would say it that way a little bit, uh, um, but you know, Dan did kinda box it in a little bit with, with the language like six feet and things like that, um, but I think we needed to have some definition too. That's kinda what I took from our last discussion. So, Dan, do you wanna jump in? Is there anything you wanna add to that? I mean?
Uh, the only thing I, I agree with you, uh, both the comments of the public as well as the board led us to add the specific, um, language of six feet. Only thing that I would also point out is this is a civil infraction, so it's not a criminal offense. Uh, we have language in there about forced abatement and, uh, collecting the cost for that. So the idea here is like Chris pointed out, this is not to penalize people as much as to get compliance. Uh, when you're dealing with a criminal ordinance, then you really have a concern about enforcement and failure to enforce. I think we have a little bit more flexibility when we're talking about a civil infraction.
Okay, uh, is there, go ahead John. Yep, see ya.
Does the building department, do they need anything to help with something like this? Uh, I know they make those, uh, special cameras that allow you to take measurements, you know? And so as part of something, I said, when you go and investigate, take some pictures and you can do the measurements off of it. You know, and that's part of your evidence, so to say, you know? I sure wouldn't wanna see them having to get out in the ice and trying to put a tape measure down and say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know that I've had a conversation with Dave Goodlow about some of this stuff. Um, I don't know that there's a final decision made, but yeah, the enforcement part of it is going to be the tricky part.
You know, I think, I think based on, um, the pictures we have seen, you know, uh, it's clear that it's, uh, been in the dozens of feet. Uh, you know, I, so I think again, I agree with you, John, uh, to some extent. I, but I think this will give us at least again, a tool to, to, um, hopefully get people to understand that they can't, um, you know, prevent other people from using the, the ice in front of their homes if they so choose. Um, so I'm pretty comfortable with it because I, I, I kind of agree with what you said at the last meeting, John, how we didn't want it to be so kind of open and can be used for so many things. So this, I think this was sort of a happy medium, at least in my opinion. Um, so I'm, I'm good with it. I, I, I think that, um, uh, I, I, I would, I support this. I think, I think, um, we have an active citizenry that has been, um, very patiently asking us to help them. Uh, and it's not just one resident, it's, it's, it's a large group of residents. And, um, I think that, um, I wanna respect the, their time and their efforts and what they've done to bring this to our attention, educate us. And I think that, uh, I don't, I don't see any reason to wait on acting any, any further. And then you know what? Um, amendment, our ordinances can be amended if we find out we didn't do it right. I mean, obviously that's not the intention here. Um, but, you know, if we need to tighten this up or something, we can certainly, uh, do that down the road. Just my two cents. Any other comments from the board? Um, we do have some public comments on this. Again, if you wanna chime in, you can, um, uh, raise your hand first. I'm looking at the video. Is anyone on video wanna make any comments on this? I don't see Mr. Hart raising. Oh, there he is. I thought maybe he might. So Mr. Hart, yes, go ahead. Well, it looks like we have that delay again. If you can hear me, go ahead, Mr. Hart.
You're on mute.
I'm gonna try to unmute you, but I don't know if it's gonna let me. It's not. Uh, Mr. Hart, we cannot hear you and it looks like we have a little bit of a delay, so I don't know if you wanna, um, either try to come back in or you can call. Um, the number is posted out there. Maybe you can call in as well. You can still see us, but you can also call. In the meantime.
Called Barb Hart.
Go ahead, Mr. Hart. You're unmuted now. Can you hear me?
Okay, uh, yes. Um, something I learned a long time ago is, um, once you make a sale, stop talking.
Mr. Hart, um. Mr. Hart, Mr. Hart, I, we can't hear you. Very good. Um, it sounds like you are on the phone. Um, can you hold the phone up to your mouth maybe closer? Sorry. Technology.
Into an automatic voice message this.
Looks like Penny's trying to help get him connected. We'll wait just a moment here.
And we're gonna try to connect you this way.
Okay.
Yep, we can, we can hear you. So Mr. Hart, if you can just keep the phone up to your, uh, mouth like that and, and Penny, you hold it to the mic and I, hopefully we can hear. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I guess I learned a long time ago saying that, uh, once you make a sale, stop talking. But the one phrase in here that may need some further explanation is the term public lake. There's some ordinances that have a, have, have a definition for what a public lake is.
Okay.
And that's the lake that has more than one property, uh, property on the lakefront. I'm, I'm concerned that Voorhees Lake might be concerned, considered, um, private by some people.
Okay, fair enough. Good point. And I appreciate you dealing with the echo. I know we're trying to do our best here, so, um, we'll look at that. Um, between our first and second readings, we are able to make minor adjustments, um, as long as they don't change the intent or the, kinda the, the overall, uh, ten of the ordinance, I guess is the right way to say that. So Dan, is there a way that, that does, that is a decent point unless maybe we could drop in the definitions, what that is or something? Um, or define that a little bit, because you're right, I do know that some people believe they live on private lakes and I, and I think that by our definition, they actually would be public, excuse me, echo. Um, Dan, any thoughts on that?
I, I couldn't really hear you, Chris, but I mean, we can take a look at it. It was put in there on purpose though, because a public lake is what we regulate. Um, so I, we'll take a look at it.
I mean, I think Voorhees, in, in, in Mr. Hart's example, Voorhees is a public lake. I mean, we provide services there, uh, so. But we will, your point, point taken, um, and we'll, we'll make sure that, that it's enforceable on, on that lake. Um, any other comments from the public? We do have an email at toboard@orient township.org on this, um, but before we go there, just wanna give anyone else an opportunity that's on the phone to unmute. There's nothing in the chat bubble regarding this. Anyone wanna unmute themselves on the phone and discuss this? Okay, now we will go to the email we received from Mr. Shane Smolcoski. Um, Penny, did you want me to read this or do you want to?
I'll, I'll just briefly go through it if that's okay.
All right.
We have a full copy of this available in the clerk's office and if you'd like to see that full copy, please contact us. This is addressed to Supervisor Barnett and the Orient Township Board. Um, I'm writing in regarding the Monday's meeting and the topic use of the ice bubblers and ice retarders. My family has lived in, um, and on Lake Orion since the mid nineteen forties. And after thinking about this, they felt it was, um, important to respond. The issue is more to public safety issue. It's also a safety issue for our first responders in case of someone going through the ice uh, more than a nuisance order. Not to mention the citizens that don't live on the lake. They use a public boat launch to gain access to our lake. You didn't want to ban them, we've mentioned, but there are many boat houses in Lake Orion. Yes, there are. And one of my family members had one of those and there's no need for use of the ice retarder, they say, as it's currently being used, as the people's boats that are in the boat houses are sitting on cradles and not in the water. Um, this gentleman goes on to say that he would like us to take a look at elite block, uh, elite dock bubbler.com, selecting a bubbler system. He felt that that would be helpful for people to use to place around, um, if they want to keep up, uh, free on freezing up and don't create a big body of water if used correctly. This is what he would like to see happen. Um, the ice retarder banned from all the lakes in Orion. Only use ice bubblers that keep the water open around the docks. Bubblers can be used to keep water open that is immediately around the object. If the bubbler is in use, they must post a sign. Um, if caught using a bubbler, a warning, receive a warning, a designated timeframe to either remove or post a proper warning. And then he's also asking that there be a fine imposed as well. And I will make this available to anyone who would like to see it in the entirety. Um, this is also wanted to keep in mind that people on the lake pay a premium tax for the privilege of being able to live on the lake. Um, we should be able to use the lake we live on year round, weather permitting. And this is from Shane Simoski at eight thirty-three Fairview Avenue. Uh, and this, he wanted to, um, also state that since the vast majority of Lake Orion is in the village, he would like a possible joint discussion on this regarding the township and the village.
Okay. Thank you for reading that in. Um, any back to the board, any comments or questions or discussion? I do know there are, I, I know a couple of people that use them on Lake Orion. I don't, I'm not going to disclose who they are, but I, 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 I'm opposed to an outright ban. I've told Mr. Hart this in the past. But I think that this is a great step in the right direction to assist in, in a problem that we know exists. Um, that prevents people from using their lakefront in the winter time. Donnie?
Would the ordinance affect the village residents as well? I'm, I suppose I should know that, but I don't.
No.
No, even though they're in the township and the village.
Correct. Right. They'd have to have their own, own, own ordinance.
Thank you.
We'd be happy to send them our, a copy of ours if it's, if it's, uh, adopted. Okay. And so I don't see any of their board comments. It was moved by Schultz and supported by Flood to declare the first reading held tonight and to post and publish the second reading and for final adoption at our July sixth, twenty twenty meeting. Um, Clerk Schultz, would you please call the roll?
Schultz, yes. Steele, then Bernie?
Yes.
Yes.
Del Rempel, then Flood?
Yes.
Yes.
Daimo, then Barnett?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Um, what brings us to item B, which is PC case two thousand nineteen dash fifty-one. If anybody thought that the planning commission wasn't busy last year, they were, because this is case fifty-one. Anyway, uh, this is, um, brought to us by the planning commission. These are proposed text amendments. To the zoning ordinance number seventy-eight, um, and changes to the biz district and the Gingivale Village over, uh, center overlay. And I think the best way to do this is to just kind of, um, briefly cover what we're trying to do here. Um, let you know what the planning commission did and why it's in front of us. Uh, and then, um, as always, throw it over to our, um, longtime planning commission, uh, Representative John Steinwell. So basically, you know, we've been talking about density, the planning commission's been talking about density, um, allowed within the multifamily, uh, zoning districts within the township. Um, discussion started after hearing from numerous, numerous developers, uh, that are allowed density is out of date and, uh, below, well below other communities and specifically in areas that are, um, closer to, you know, the highway and the stores and things like that. That's why we're talking about the biz district, which is the brown innovation zone, Brown Road. Became apparent the biz district as well as Gingivale really district should be discussed separate from our multifamily districts. Um, RM one and RM two. So the planner, uh, pointed out that the master plan support already supports higher density in biz and Gingivale. So they had a bunch of discussions and I'm sure some of you have watched, um, the replays or watched them live, the planning commission meetings. The planner gave a really great, um, informative PowerPoint presentation. It's actually attached in our board book tonight, uh, on, on November twentieth. And, um, Tammy has done a great job sort of shepherding this through. Ultimately, um, the board, I'm sorry, the planning commission, moved by Commissioner Gross, it's seconded by Commissioner Walker, forwarded this play, recommendation to the board to approve and adopt, the township initiated text amendment, uh, due to the fact that it has had an extensive discussion at previous meeting with the planning commission and, uh, to amend the ordinance to correct efficiencies, clarify the ordinance and provide more flexibility in achieving the goals of the township master plan. Uh, there was discussion. Ultimately, the, the motion was carried six zero, uh, with one, uh, planning commissioner absent. I know our planning, uh, and zoning director Tammy, Tammy Gerling is here tonight with us as well. I don't need to throw it to her yet. I would just say that, um, if you haven't had a chance to, uh, review the presentation put together by Giffords Webster, it might be boring for some people, but it, it was extremely interesting for me. Talking about kind of like the sections of housing that are sort of missing in, in a lot of, uh, communities and things like that. And it was actually a really interesting discussion. So, um, I don't know. I will, um, I'll stop here for a minute maybe and just let, uh, maybe John jump in if he wants to. Kind of share maybe his, some of his thoughts or, you know, because that's what he does is he represents us at the planning commission. So John, without, before I keep talking, I'm going to let you, uh, jump in here for, uh, for a few words if you'd like.
Well, just to be completely honest with you on this thing, I was a little lukewarm to a lot of other stuff. Especially when you say, well, it's developers who saying that our multifamily density isn't high enough. And it always seems that way that, you know, people want to cram more stuff in. So I was a little lukewarm. But, uh, you know, it is nice that we would allow some of this different kinds of, uh, units in there. And so, uh, that part, you know, is changing it to allow some of this stuff is kind of nice, you know, for the mixed thing. Unfortunately, it doesn't seem like we ever get that stuff. Like you look at those pictures from Gifford Webster's and yeah, that would be acceptable to me. But somehow we use it and we just get, uh, uh, just a small version of something that's not nearly as nice as what they're showing there. But that's a possibility. And at least it's mostly down the biz district, which is kind of strange. Even call it the biz district and yet here we're talking about residential and a lot of the stuff we have down there is residential, but you know, it's okay, I guess. I think this will be more in effect of what happens along, uh, Gin, uh, Baldwin Road there in the Gingivale District. That's where you're probably see more activity is, uh, some of those last empty plots along that stretch there begin to develop.
Yeah. Thanks, John. And I'll just say, we, we have had, um, this is not completely driven by developers. It, it's not driven by developers at all. They've certainly given feedback. Um, but, uh, we know, and even when we did, um, when we interviewed planners, uh, one of the things that was brought to our attention by actually two of the people that submitted proposals was that they thought that we needed to take a look at this section of our ordinance and, uh, and look to see if we are able to provide, you know, some of the types of housing, um, that would sort of maybe be considered, um, you know, starter type housing and, and a little more dense. And, and you know, I, I agree with you, John, the biz has meant different things in different times in our kind of evolution here in the township. Biz doesn't necessarily stand for business. It's, you know, the initials are brown innovation zone. Um, so we are, you know, looking to create something down there and you can see we've started, um, but, uh, you know, without, I'm not going to go through this whole presentation, just wanted to just point out that there were uh, lots of interesting, uh, case studies that, um, Rod and Eric from, uh, Giffords Webster pointed to, uh, to kind of lead the discussion. So, uh, with that, I don't know if there's anything else I'm missing. Um, again, this is a, you know, the planning commission is a recommend, recommending body to the township board. So they would be, uh, recommending us to, um, uh, to ho- hold the first reading. Let me pull up the actual, uh, agenda item here. Uh, that, you know, what, what's in front of us tonight is to declare the first reading, uh, and, uh, have the clerk publish for the second reading and possible approval at our June fifteenth meeting. Penny?
So I move to declare the Orient Township Board of Trustees held and approved the first reading on May eighteenth, twenty twenty for PC two thousand nineteen dash fifty-one text amendment to zoning ordinance number seventy-eight, articles two, thirty-three and thirty-four, and to direct the clerk to publish for the second reading and possible approval adoption on June fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Support motion. Supported by Flood, moved by Schultz. Thank you. Questions, comments, discussion? Um, and, and I do know, uh, Tammy is on if we need to ask her questions. Um, Tammy, you don't have to come on unless we have questions for you that John or I can't answer, but you're, oh, there she is. Hi Tammy. All right. So Tammy's here. Anybody have any questions or comments on this? If you have, and, and I think this is, this is, there's a lot of detail here. And a lot, lot of hours went into, to the language and things like that. So, um, you know, this is the first reading. Obviously typically when you start this process, it, it shepherds in the, the, uh, the adoption of the amendments. But I really encourage you to take a look at, at these, uh, you know, what, what's, uh, what's being proposed. There's lots of attachments. Tammy, did you want to, um, jump in here? I see Donnie's hand up first. I guess I'll go to Donnie.
I wanted to hear from Tammy. That's why I raised.
All right. Go ahead, Tammy.
Okay. First of all, I do want to apologize that on a, a few pages, there are some handwritten changes and that was due to a technology problem in the eleventh hour when the packets were due. Um, so I do apologize for that. Um, those handwritten were just some, um, basic suggestions from, uh, Attorney Kelly on, on, it was not really substance. It was more, um, proper wordage, um, verbiage. So, um, I apologize again for their handwriting. The, the proposed text, um, was summarized quite well from, um, Supervisor Barnett. You know, these two areas, Gingivale and, um, biz, yes, it is proposing an increase in density. But as you look at the text, um, there's, there's some give and take. Um, you know, some criteria on how they get an additional density from what is typical from our RM and RM, RM one and RM two. That pretty much summarizes. I mean, there were a couple, um, uh, small changes to the text and, and some wording that the planner found, as long as we were already looking at the biz district, that really has nothing to do with the density. But as you look through the proposed textual, it'll be obvious, um, what that is what he was trying to accomplish. Um, I did find as I was reviewing it today, one, um, typo. Um, so I've noted that for the second reading and it will be, um, changed for that. Um, that pretty much summarizes it. Um, it's pretty self-explanatory, but as Chris said, that presentation, if you're able to actually watch it, um, it was very interesting showing that density, the numbers are somewhat deceiving. That based on how are they're laid out in a building, something, the number can be deceiving. You can have a number that sounds extremely high in density, but based on how it's laid out, um, in different types of buildings, it's not as dense as it appears in, in, uh, a numerical form.
Yeah, I think that's a good summary. And I would say that, um, I'm trying to actually pull up, um, the mark, it, it kind of the, the vision plan, we called it, uh, what we were dreaming Brown Road could be. Um, to show you some of the actual, um, images we shared in this, in this document, wouldn't even really fit the current zoning that we have. That's why, that's one of the things that sort of started driving this discussion. So, um, I'm not pulling, I'm not finding it really easily. Oh, here it is. See if this is it. But just to give you an idea of some of the things that we kind of, when we, um, dreamed, when we were kind of dreaming about, uh, reef, reef, kind of reforming this area or re, um, positioning it, uh, what some of the things we were talking about. Uh, and so, um, that, that's the streetscape. We did that part. Uh, but mixed uses, we wanted obviously lots of green spaces. Well, and, and that's the kind of one of the misnomers is you can have green spaces and still have, um, some of these, um, what you would maybe call higher end uses. So where you'd have some of a mix of residential and commercial, and we don't have anything of this yet. Um, you can see, you know, some of the public spaces, but also mixed in with, you know, what would be considered obviously higher, um, higher density residential. Am I sharing the right screen? Yeah, I guess I am. I'm looking at the feed from ON TV and it's a little bit behind. Can you guys see that? Can you see the land use framework? Yeah, okay. So this was the, um, this was the document that, uh, we worked with O H M's, um, planning division to help put together to sort of try to say, we want to attract some of this type of development in the right spots of our community. We're not talking about, um, the northwest part of our, our town where we have a lot of suburban farms. We're talking about Brown Road. We're talking about, you know, proximity to two I seventy-five exits. Um, and all this major retail, this is kind of the, the area we're talking about. So that's, that's, this sort of started the discussion. And then, uh, you know, Tammy honestly has been working on it really ever since then. That, that, that's from back in two thousand seventeen is when the final, that, that sort of brochure came together. So have started actually much, um, earlier than that. So, so that's kind of some of the things we, that, that, um, they've been working on and what sort of started the discussion. And then, and then John, I think gave a great summary and, and with Tammy as well. So that's where we're at. We're looking to, move forward on this to, um, and, and we have the motion and support on that. Is there any other comments or questions for Tammy? Um, or for John? Yes, Mike.
I just want to comment that this is a good timing. On the southwest portion here of the township along seventy-five Baldwin, where she was facing one Baldwin being done now, all that vacant properties along that, that was a full lane boulevard. Uh, good timing on that. Looking forward to those developments, uh, someday being in there.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? I don't see any. How about public comment? Any public comment on this? Well, first look to videos and I only see nine videos. And, uh, no other members of the public. How about, um, if you're on the phone and you'd like to unmute yourself, please, please go ahead and do that. Look to get a comment, comment on this. I'll just pause for a moment.
No email.
No email and no new chat bubbles. So there's no additional public comment. Again, this is the first reading. Um, the second reading would be, uh, held on June fifteenth for the motion. Uh, moved by Schultz, supported by Flood. Clerk Schultz, would you please call the roll?
Steele, then Bernie?
Yes.
Yes.
Del Rempel, then Flood?
Yes.
Yes.
Daimo, then Barnett?
Yes.
Yes.
Schultz, yes.
That passes seven zero. Uh, we had one additional item. I will share it on my screen. It was added, um, because the current state of emergency, um, expires today, but it's been extended. So, uh, we have adopted an order, um, back on March sixteenth. And, uh, it's because the, um, we are going to, we're looking to be in conjunction with the state and I'll share this. But basically, Dan, do you want to summarize, um, what this, what this says and what this does for the board, please?
Uh, sure. Basically we've added one sentence. If you go to the first now, therefore be a result. We've just added language that says, um, it will be extended, uh, until, uh, the termination of the governor's state of emergency or unless the board of trustees extends or terminates. The old order, um, ended today.
Go ahead. Sorry.
I move that we approve or adopt the charter township of Orion Board of Trustees resolution to declare state of emergency as presented.
Was that Bernie? Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, we're, we are working, we're seeking, uh, FEMA reimbursement on anything that's reimbursable. Um, you know, we're, we are working, we're seeking FEMA reimbursement on anything that's reimbursable. Uh, it's important that we have a, have a state of emergency in place in order to um to do that and to do some, do other important, the important business of the township during this immediate time. So um, I hope the board appreciates and understands that I have not been acting autonomously virtually throughout this entire time. Uh, we've held a couple special meetings to keep you uh posted as to what was going on. So I plan on continuing to do that. I'm hopeful that uh we're out of this sooner than later, and I I think we will be based on the governor's actions today. Um, so just know that um I will continue to keep you posted. Um, and and if there's any major decisions to be made, uh, unless I am unable to gather the, gather you all quickly, um, I will plan on doing that. I will plan on consulting with you and making sure we are continuing to work together as a board as we have over the past ten weeks during this uh pandemic. So thank you for that. Any other comments or questions? Uh, it's a resolution, so we will need a roll call. Um, I'm sorry, is there any public comment?
No email.
No email? Is is there any chat bubble? No chat bubble? Anybody want to unmute themselves? I'll give you an opportunity. I hear no one. Uh, so Clerk Schultz, please call the roll.
Bernie then Del Rimple.
Yes.
Yes. Flood then Staimo.
Yes.
Yes.
Barnett then Schultz.
Yes.
Yes. Steel.
Yes.
Thank you. That completed the pending business. Um, in the regular business, we have uh five reports tonight. Uh, first report is the uh police and fire reports. Let me uh try to get back to the right screen here, folks. Just give me one second. Uh, again, I'm not gonna um kind of linger on these too long, but just know that uh all this information is available on our websites. On our, on our website, sorry, is our motion to receive and file on the police and fire reports.
I moved. Support.
Supported by Staimo. Uh, I don't see Lieutenant Toth, maybe he's on here, but the one thing we are remind, reminding people, please lock your doors. Not because of COVID, uh, it's just when things get warm, more people are outside. And so it's a good opportunity to remind people to lock your vehicle doors and your driveways. Um, because some of our students have been cooped up, and let's not give them a reason to uh to get in trouble. So uh Lieutenant Toth would remind you that if you were here. Uh, those moved by Bernie, supported by Staimo, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that that carries. Uh, seven zero. Next report is free, I'm sorry, is our, our insurance uh quarterly report.
Move to receive and file. The M M R M A quarterly report, state.
Support.
Support.
Okay, we'll give that one to Schultz. Um. Moved by Staimo, supported by Schultz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes seven zero. Next, Free Disposal Day. It's on. It is happening. Yay. Thank you Waste Management, great partners Kathy Klein. I think she might be listening at home. Um, we are grateful. I've talked to Scott Rowe at Waste Management Eagle Valley a few times about this. Um, we wanted to uh hopefully make sure we could keep this on for our residents, and we want to thank Scott and Kathy and their team for continuing to offer it to our residents. It's June sixth, seven A M to one P M. You just have to bring a driver's license to show that you live in the township. And it's, this is not the no-haz. This is not household hazardous, so you can't bring your yard waste or tires or paint um or um computers. This is for just cleaning your garage. And you filled up your truck and you want to get rid of it, and you don't want to set it all curbside. Um, so um, they're also doing this as a food drive. Um, and I know, I think Penny, you probably wanted to talk about this too, but I've been talking with Scott. I think you've been talking with Kathy, but um I'll let you talk about that part of it, Penny, if you want.
Bring your food. They would like to do a donation to um a local food pantry. So when you come to drop off your items, be sure to bring in some canned goods, some non-perishable items that you have. And we'll um, and Waste Management will be sure to get them to the food pantries that need them. We appreciate everybody doing that.
The only change from last year to this year is Scott Rowe will not be cooking hot dogs because we are um social distancing and uh but in the past, they've even supplied food. Um, we're grateful for their partnership uh at Eagle Valley and Waste Management. So thank you to them. Uh, entertain a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
And uh we'll give that to Staimo. Julia, you're close. You're just, just a little bit behind on the. Um, uh, this is a, yeah, and unless, you know, Flood, you want to amend your motion to require us all to clean our garages between now and next Saturday? I don't know. So are we, I guess we have a few weeks here, so a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I I'm gonna have to take my son-in-law's shed down, take that over there.
There you go. Um, so great opportunity to do some spring cleaning. Um, all right, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that's seven zero. Uh, two more. Uh, the May twenty twenty safety path updates. I'm gonna throw this over to the queen of safety paths, um, Donnie Steele, who sits on our Paint Creek Trail and our Polly and Trail Advisory Committees. Um, and go ahead.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I just wanted to, um, we didn't have our last two meetings. And so we thought if we just had a brief summary of what is happening around Orion Township. Um, our, our, there's still three projects that are in the process of being constructed right now. One of them is our safe routes to school, and you can see all the um different moving parts on that one. The second one is Jocelyn Road, North of Heights Road. Um, the bid uh has just been awarded as of last week to Superior Excavating, so that should be starting hopefully sometime soon. And the third one um is our East Clarkson Road Pathway Project. And you can see that the bridge is being constructed and manufactured in Wisconsin, and so um we're waiting for that. So there's no delay on that project as either. And um our, well, actually, our last project Indian Wood Face that has been completed, and they just did site work and not site work, um inspection, just to make sure that it is um the rep uh repairs have been made and that there, the grass is growing, which it is, and so that has been finalized as well. Restoration is the word I was looking for, and that's been finalized as well. And so we're anxious to meet again and see what new projects will be in the hopper um in the upcoming years, not necessarily this year. We've got our hands full this year. So that's my report, and I'd like to make a motion to receive and file.
Thank you. Is there support? Julia?
Support.
There is. There she is. Well. All right.
Trying to keep my finger off the buzzer for that.
Um, I am so excited about all the progress in paths. We've, we've accomplished, this board has accomplished in four years. It's remarkable. And yes, it's a little bit self, um, in, you know, um, I don't know, adoration. Um, I apologize if, I don't mean it to be in an arrogant way. I just know this, this stuff takes so much work. Jeff Stout has been awesome. Our team at O H M has been amazing. The Safe Routes to School project, we literally started that like six or seven years ago. Um, East Clarkson Pathway has been a dream forever. We're gonna connect the Paint Creek and Polly and Trails. Um, so in spite of all the craziness going on in the world, this document right here is amazing. And uh, and again, special thanks to Donnie, who who attends every safety path meeting, and I think has for at least um, at least the last four years, and I think the last eight. So um, awesome work, team. We should be really proud of this. Um, a lot of these projects, literally, people told me when I started, we wouldn't get done. And uh like multiple are happening and gonna be wrapping this year. So it's really exciting. Great work, everybody. Um, get out and use them. Uh, so moved by Steel and supported by Dal Rimple. Any questions, by the way? Sorry. Um, Jessica, Mark, and Jim from O H M are awesome and reachable if anybody has any specific questions, or Jeff Stout. Um, all in favor? Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? You would be the biggest jerk of the meeting if you grew, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Uh, and then last, we have financial statements, the final set of financial statements from December twenty nineteen uh to March twenty twenty, or I'm sorry, the final financial statements. Uh, that is a lengthy document, documents. Um, entertain a motion to receive and file those.
So moved.
Support, and I have comments.
Go ahead with your comments.
Yeah, yeah, so boards, you've got your revenue and expenditure reports for the last four months, as well as the balance sheet for four months. As, and then you will also have your cash and investment accounts that are covered on these financial statements. And that should wrap us up for twenty nineteen and got us moving into twenty twenty by three months. And I want to thank Barb Armstrong for providing this information. It's a lot of work, and it's always good to get it in the board book.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thumbs up.
I, I concur. Great stuff.
All right, emotion, support, and great stuff. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Who supported?
Schultz, you did. It was moved by Staimo, supported by Schultz.
Moved by Staimo. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to public comment. Thanks, everyone, for bearing with us. Um, we've done a handful of these, but they're still sometimes challenging, so I appreciate that. I'm working in a multiple machine, so I, hopefully, it's okay to watch at home and things like that. Um, or join in next time on our go-to meeting. We are able to meet like this. I'm giving you time to type a chat bubble if you want to, by the way. Um, we are, um, the governor extended her order to allow us to continue to meet virtually through the end of June. Uh, at least our next meeting, um, yes, at least our next meeting will be virtual. Uh, potentially both meetings in June. Not, not, not sure on the second meeting, but at least our next meeting. It takes some time to plan these. Uh, so that's where we will, uh, we will just be opening up, we think, um, first week of June. So, uh, that said, thank you uh for your patience with me. I would open up public comment. Um, I tried to stall just in case anyone was trying to type something if that snuck up on you. Um, so first, I'll go to the videos, and I only see us, our seven, all right, there we go. Yes, sir. Um, let me, let me turn off the camera screen. There we go. All right, Mr. Brohard, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Just wanted to say thank you for allowing my son Christopher and I to attend, so we could take notes for a citizenship badge. And uh, you didn't have a, a ton of disagreement, and he was supposed to write about an issue you disagree on. I, I don't know if I can bait you into a brief spat about something, or if we should just note whether or not something's a public lake or not. But uh, thank you for letting us attend, and I'll look forward to reading his little report on what you all were up to tonight.
Thank you, Doug, and thank you, Christopher. Best of luck in your scouting um endeavors. We're glad you joined us. Yeah, you know what? We had um not a lot of uh real uh debatable stuff, but don't worry. If you tune in down the road, we, we sometimes get into it, but tonight we had a lot of things that seemed like we had been working on for a while, and kind of culminated together tonight. So, but thank you again, Mr. Brohard, and thanks for your patience with us. Um, and tell Chrissy, hey, Christopher, you can have school off tomorrow.
Thank you.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I don't think I have that authority. You probably have to do Zoom or something. I'm sorry, Christopher. Um, see, and even Julia, Julia even kind of, I think I got in trouble with our teacher, Miss D, so I don't have that authority. Um, but it would. When things open back up, though, Christopher, and if you want to learn more, um, if you're interested in this, we'd love to have you come, come pay us a visit. We can show you what we do here. Uh, so thank you. Any other public comment on the video? Or or unmute yourself if you're on the phone and you'd like to give a verbal comment. I'll give you a pause for a moment. I know we have an email there. Anyone want to give verbal comment? I will look at the chat bubble, even though I see it is still, um, there's a thanks Tammy from Donnie, but that was from earlier. Um, Penny, do you want to read the email?
I don't have one.
Oh, I have one. Um, I, I have one in the board. Uh, maybe just refresh your quicker. This is from Lee Smith, who says, "A huge shout out to Aaron Wiley and the team at the Parks and Recreation Department. I have frequented Camp Agawam nearly every day for a week. It looks amazing and tons of fun." And he sent this really cool picture, which I'm gonna low-tech show you on my iPad if it will refresh. There it is. So if you know Lee, he is a veteran. He's a proud veteran. He's an awesome community volunteer. He, he takes photos of all of our events for free and gives his time to our community. He's a rock star, and we appreciate you, Lee. But if you follow him on Instagram or Facebook, he's been posting some pretty sweet pictures from Agawam in Lake Sixteen and a few other spots around town this week. So thanks, Lee, and I will um, will pass the kudos on to Aaron Wiley and the Parks and Rec team. So look at that, virtual public comments working here. All right, any other public comment? Going once, going twice, refresh the inbox one more time. Sold. Bring it to the board. Uh, this time, we're gonna go in order that you are on my screen, which I don't know if it's the same on our own screen, but we will start with John Staimo.
Well, I was glad to read today. I see uh they're gonna start the repaving of Gregory Road on June first, so I'm sure everybody around there is excited about that. It's been a long time coming, so hopefully we'll get that done. Doesn't sound like it's gonna take that long, so hopefully they'll be done pretty quick. Uh, just so you know, like in my place of business, which is a pretty big place, they have returned to work today. Uh, it was very interesting to see uh training we had to take online before we even arrived and what we have to do every day as far as reporting, and a lot of the things they did around the facility uh so that we can maintain our social distancing properly. I mean, things you wouldn't even think of, like you go into a bathroom and there's three sinks, and the middle sink has a big blue X on it. You can't use it, you know? It's a, it's a lot of cool stuff. Um, and that's just what people are gonna have to do, but I just, I'm glad they're doing it. They're trying to keep us all safe and doing the best we can, and yet there's a lot of work still that has to be done. The last thing, Chris, is I don't know, like if we return to actually have an in-person board meetings, hopefully the boardroom down there is conducive for that, and is still trying to maintain our spacing. If not, I might suggest that we should consider looking at the Orion Center. I think you actually have a little more space to set us up, like on the, what would that be, the south side of the building? You know, and then put chairs out six feet apart, you know? And if two people come together, they can pull two of the chairs together. But uh, you know, it gives you a little more space to spread out uh that way there than I think we have in the boardroom down in the basement. But I guess that's kind of up to you, as you kind of consider this for when we finally start getting back together to meet. So anyway, that's it. Hopefully, everybody's doing okay. It's like I say, it's the new normal, still working, having fun.
Thank you, John, and I will address your comments in my comments in a moment, but for now, we're gonna go to Julia.
All right, and a couple of things. Um, first, I also want to say thanks to Parks and Rec for the great heart hunts that are currently out at our parks. Uh, my kids and I have done the first two already, and we are gonna hit Jesse Decker when it's not raining uh to get out there to see that one, but a great use um of our parks, getting people to get out and explore them. And you don't have to be young if you want to get out there and do it. It's a great time just to walk around and explore. And then um update on Forgotten Harvest, we were out there again today in the rain. It was great times. Uh, we have been running out of food before. Last week was eleven forty-five, we were out of food. And this week, it was about eleven thirty that we were out of food. So there is still a great need in our community for this. Um, they are looking to continue the program through the end of June. Um, so that, oh, there we go, uh, looking to continue the program through the end of June in the exact same spot uh to help people until there isn't a need out here. Um, so really excited to get to be a huge part of of that. It's a great time to be out there. Oh, there I am, right there in my raincoat. I can see me.
Right here.
And the last thing is I wanted to remind everybody about the Veterans Memorial, which is gonna be the virtual five K this year. And I will be running this time. This is the first time I'm gonna do this as an adult. So if anybody else wants to uh do it with me six feet apart, let me know. Um, I'm always looking for a good running partner these days.
And I just want to jump in for a second and say Julia has been in every Forgotten Harvest Monday from seven thirty till whenever the food's done, usually one. And it was an absolute hell for this morning. I stopped out to say hi, give some height, some elbows. And um I got the heck out of there because I was a wuss, uh, but they stayed out there, and I can see them from this window right here, just getting drenched. And actually, a lot of familiar faces every week. Um, we have some amazing volunteers in our community, but thank you, Julia, for stepping up and leading, um, leading there. So, all right, um, and yes, I will show the forgot, uh, the five K as well um in a moment when uh, when I'm, when I can pull it up on my screen. Let's go to Brian Bernie. Let's go to Brian Bernie. Oh, hey, real quick, one thing on the Forgotten Harvest. It is gonna go through June, they said, but not next Monday because Monday is Memorial Day. So no Forgotten Harvest food truck next Monday. It's not happening at all next week, unfortunately. But it will pick up and it will, it should go through the entire month of June. Um, so, and then we'll have to circle back to that, sorry about that. Mr. Bernie?
Yeah, no problem. Um, I just want to say, you know, today was a good day, uh, for, for certain numbers and things that we're all anticipating and looking at. Um, you know, having zero deaths in Detroit yesterday for the first time in a really long time. Seeing that, uh, states that are reopening, you know, no huge spike as of yet. Um, these are all great things. And then we got good news about the states, you know, basically up north, uh, the Traverse City area and U.P. Being able to start to open, you know, whether it's 50%, um, but that's, that's great news. Uh, it's very encouraging. But it, uh, doesn't do much for us down here. So I just continue my plea to everyone, saying please continue to support your local businesses. Uh, it is, I've said this every week, but, um, if anyone that's listening, it means a lot to people just to go get carry out. Do any type of business you can. And I know this is controversial, but you know what? I don't care, um, if you're a business and you can open successfully, I support you 100% in doing that. Um, I think we can all do our part, um, to maintain, you know, certain guidelines and, and do it in a thoughtful manner. That's not gonna put anyone at risk. So, you have my support. Doesn't mean that, uh, you can't get your license taken away. I just want you to know that you have my full support. So, um, I wish the best for all of our businesses, especially all of our citizens, but, um, I know the businesses are, are definitely struggling and gonna continue to struggle until they can open. So, that's it for me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bernie. Uh, Penny?
Thank you, Chris. We did get an email, um, to the board email. It says, um, from Kathleen Klein. Thanks for the announcement on Free Disposal Day and reminding the community members about the food drive and the free disposal. And it's not a county no has event, so she appreciates the support on that. And then also, this might take a little bit, Chris, but it's very important, um, and I appreciate Dan Kelly's help, our attorney on this. I want to read a statement regarding the library board filing deadline. Um, as township residents are aware, 2020 is an important election year with three statewide elections occurring within 10 months. As the township clerk, both myself and my staff, take our duties to conduct a fair and, uh, elections very seriously. For this reason, we provide rigorous training and instruction for the many election workers needed to conduct the presidential primary and general election. My office has always sought to involve as many people in the election process as possible. And even during the current COVID-19 crisis, we have remained available to accept certify all candidate petitions and applications. As part of this process, I have gone the extra mile to be as informative as possible and publicly release as much election information and candidate requirement as allowed. Although, although most of the rules for candidate filings and cutoffs are under state law, particularly during this crisis, my office has continued to assist candidates whenever possible. In this regard, my office produced and published a 2020 candidate filing information file, flyer, which unfortunately incorrectly stated the library board filing deadline as July 16th, 2020, which is the deadline for district libraries. This was a mistake and I sincerely apologize to anyone affected by this error. Upon realizing the mistake, I notified the current library board members and the Orion Township Board and the Election Commission and the Library Executive Director. In addition, I notified the individuals of the ballot, um, excuse me, the individuals of the ballot writing option and provided all with the state writing candidate declaration of intent form. And I'm hopeful all those interested in running will take advantage of this right in option. Finally, I have, um, reviewed this issue with the county's election official and our township attorney. I have been assured that the filing deadlines are by state statute and are not the responsibility. And I'm sorry, I have been assured that the filing deadlines, um, are by state statute and are the responsibilities of every candidate. The deadlines are not within the discretion or responsibility of the clerk's office. While I personally feel terrible that my good faith efforts to inform and help may have unintentionally misinformed candidates, I have been advised the sole responsibility for deadlines and election eligibility rests on the candidates and cannot be corrected by me. As much as I would like, I cannot extend or undo the result. All I can do at this point is to encourage any candidate seeking a position on the library board to do so by a writing candidacy. I will also provide a cap, uh, copy of this statement to the Lake Orion Review. And I ask that anyone in the community that has questions regarding this, if they would please, um, contact me with those questions or concerns. Thank you.
I think Chris is frozen.
Yeah, I think he's, he's froze up.
Donnie's next on the comments.
I think she's frozen too.
Donnie and Chris are frozen.
I think the township hall took a hit.
Oh, man.
They didn't pay their internet bill again.
There you go.
Oh, is he moving? Nope.
Who hasn't gone yet? Mike, why don't you go?
Excuse me, did you read the chat that it says that if, if he doesn't rejoin, it's gonna end in 60? Did it say 60 seconds or 60 minutes? I just wanted to alert you to that, sorry.
I think it said 60 minutes.
Oh, okay, sorry, I just saw 60, sorry.
My foot, you're up.
Jamie, you can run the meeting, Jamie, you do a good job with the planning commissioner, ZBA. Want me to go?
Yep.
Yes. Four comments, nine.
All right, uh, I reflect all your things, Penny, I, I feel sorry for what happened and, uh, you, you stood up to responsibility and took care of that. And those things happen and we all have a responsibility ourselves to make sure we're following those deadlines, but. Uh, I, I thank you for getting hold of Brian and myself too and keeping us on the loop on that. So, you got my full support, I know you got Brian's too. Uh, glad to see the governor, uh, we're starting to move into, we're recovering from this a little bit. Hopefully we don't have a, a backlash on it. Uh, I know for a fact, I got two golf leagues that now have started and just waiting for the third one now in June, so. For me, normalcy, that's getting back to my golf. And, uh, but, uh, on a serious matter, uh, the timing couldn't be better for auditors to be in right now before the financial crisis we're gonna find ourselves in here. And we're all in the same boat, every municipality's in the same boat. I really feel bad for the businesses because, because July 1st, they gotta pay the, the summer tax bills are coming due. And they pay the full 18 mils on that school tax, so. It'll be interesting to see how this works out because, uh, no one's bringing any money in. And I agree exactly what Brian said on, uh, if I was a business owner, I'd be, uh, concerned too. And I'd be doing what I had to do to keep my family fed and taken care of. So, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just, um, I just had two quick comments. I agree with, um, people going, need to go back to work. I just, um, wish the kids could go back to school too. That would be a, a double, a double. So, um, we're looking forward to going back to work here at the township and we have made, um, Chris and his team has worked really diligent on moving forward to a safe environment and getting back to work. And it, and it, and it's, I think it's gonna be hard because people have been gone for so long. So it's 30 days to break a habit, 30 days to make a habit. We won't be having to make a habit of how to go back on a regular basis, but I'm thankful to be able to have a job to go back to, so. That's just, um, my, that wasn't really my comment, but my comment is, um, the Polly and Trail, I gotta give it to, give credit to Linda Moran. She got on Channel 4 tonight to talk about her bottle drive. And she's pretty much filled up the whole, um, Oxford Village Police pole barn full of bottles for, for funding where she has lost her funding via pop bottles. She said she's probably up to about $12,000. So, I don't know how she's gonna move them from that barn to a spot to get her money, but I believe that she has the power. So, um, I want to thank her for all her hard work on that. So, um, one other comment about greenup. Um, Parks and Rec is still doing their greenup for Orion Township and you can get a list from the Orion Center. And there's bags there and you can work within your own families at your own pace, um, with your own project. So, I'm thankful that he continued that because it, um, these roads really need it right now. So those are my comments, thanks, Chris.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I, I apologize, well, I, I don't know, we, we lost internet here at Township Hall. Um, Donnie and I are sitting here, so you guys probably lost us and don't admit it now, but I'm sure some of you clapped and applauded. Um, but then when we came back, I, it wasn't giving me the choice to continue on. I had to end it for everybody or else we had that crazy echo. So anyway, the people, the gurus, the man, the myth, legend, Ian at ON TV is gonna bush, mash this all together. No one will ever know it, the magic of TV, right, Ian? Thank you to ON TV, thanks to everybody in our community. We, we, we have an amazing, strong community. Um, I see John's name, I don't see him, but I did want to circle back to what John did say and, and I agree. Um, we have put a heavy focus, uh, we delayed meeting with our staff on our regular time on Friday till, wait till today. Still, we could just make sure we could dot a couple of more i's and cross a couple of t's, but we have a really, um, great plan to bring our team back to work. Uh, I'm gonna share my screen, I'll show you a few things here just at the end. But this is the plan that the team started seeing today. And, uh, you know, it talks a lot about, um, you know, we, we're, we're taking best practices from lots of places. Uh, the sheriff's office has this great video. Uh, we're using a third-party app that is really cool news. It's free to Orion Township because it's an Orion Township business and, uh, we're grateful for, um, uh, for the team at Clear2Go. Uh, they put out a press release today and saying they're, they're excited to have Orion Township as a client. Uh, I guess we don't want to maybe publicly say, but it's too late that, that, um, they're helping us out. Uh, but it's a great, um, employee screening app to make sure that we are following the Oakland, uh, the state, the CD, the, the federal, state, and county guidelines. Um, and in our case right now, the county guidelines, it seems like are a little more strict than state and federal guidelines. So I'm not sure what's gonna happen. Uh, but lots of these, uh, lots of great information, all these things are hot links to, um, different things we're doing. So I won't bore you with those gory details, uh, but there is a great plan that's in place. I will tell you that, um, John, to your point about the boardroom, we are, uh, looking at options. Um, and I don't know, it sounds like, uh, we, you know, great minds, because we had several people bring this to our attention. And so I'm just gonna share it actually, and I see Jeff Stout's on here still, so don't be mad at me, Jeff. Um, nothing is totally set in stone, but we, um, the sheriff's office has been using, uh, some of the space in the boardroom, actually using a lot of the space in the boardroom for the last 10 weeks, uh, for, uh, additional report writing space and for a break room. We have 35 deputies, they are in extremely tight quarters. To the fact, to the point where the county actually came in last week and removed desks and chairs, uh, because they weren't, uh, following, uh, social distancing guidelines. That said, we have to take care of our deputies and make sure they have a good working environment. We are exploring options and working with, um, Aaron and with Jeff Stout, myself, and with Ian from ON TV to look to move our, our board meetings, when we do meet again, uh, down to the Orion Center. We have to verify a lot of stuff, so Aaron, please don't yell at me and Jeff, please don't yell at me because it's not all totally buttoned up, but, um, we need to make sure we can do that. But, uh, that's something we're looking at doing and making sure we can be properly social distanced when we do meet again. The great news is it's the home of ON TV and the room's off cable, they can plug right into the wall. They've gone live from there many times. Uh, so, we're working on that. You should know we have a great plan across the board. Um, our team is working really well together. I'm really proud of the work we're doing. I want to say thanks to, um, publicly, to the 10 township employees that self-selected to voluntarily furlough to assist us. Exactly what Mike's talking about, being great stewards, uh, knowing that we are, um, going to see some reduced revenues, uh, for the foreseeable future. Uh, we had 10 employees knowing that we're gonna be slower and taking advantage of some other, um, opportunities, uh, to take some time off and to assist the rest of the employees here. So, uh, we want to thank those 10 employees, uh, both union and non-union employees. And we want to thank the Teamsters, uh, for their work with us on coming up with, uh, the language and the agreements to make this all happen. Uh, so, the, the plan, real, in, in brief, we will be back, uh, starting next Tuesday. We've been here anyway, uh, for the last nine or 10 weeks, whatever it's been. Um, most, some of us have been here in the offices, some of us, everyone else has been working from home. But starting next Tuesday, the day after Memorial Day, you'll see the Township Hall being, uh, filled with our employees and, uh, the Orion Center. You'll see some new faces and new seats, you'll see lots of safety protocols in place. And you probably won't be able to get in that week. Uh, we're looking to potentially open to the public that following Monday, June 1st, when the stay-home order is officially set to be lifted. As was mentioned earlier by Brian, governor did make some announcements this morning. Um, I listened to the press conference where I heard the mayor of Traverse City inviting the entire state of Michigan to come to Traverse City this weekend, uh, because the cherry blossoms are in bloom and it's Memorial Day weekend. I think that sort of defeats the purpose. And I wish I could have seen the governor's face when he was saying that because I was listening to the radio, but I can't imagine that's what she expected him to say or wanted him to say. Uh, anyway, I agree with you, Brian. Uh, our businesses, um, I've talked to many, many business owners. And, uh, I might sound like a broken record, but, but, uh, I wouldn't say the majority that I'm talking to would say this, but several have said they don't know if they'll ever be able to reopen after this, depending on what type of loans and grants they're able to get. And so, we have a, we have a, a job to do right now, more than ever, to really reach out into our wallets and support local. Um, Tanya Hamilton, who is the director of the North Open Community Coalition, started a cool Facebook page, um, called, um, what's it called? I'm gonna look it up because I had it written down and I don't see it here. Oh, it's called, I'm just gonna show it to you. So this is, this is my, this is your homework. First of all, have you heard about that 5K race? Jenny and the Parks team have done a great job promoting our five, virtual 5K race that Julia referenced. You can find it through the Parks and Recreation, you can find it through the Veterans Memorial. Um, you should like that page if you haven't already. The page that I was referencing is called Stand BY LO with B-U-I in quotes. Uh, and it's a great place to say, "Hey, I need new refrigerator, um, filter. Where do, can I get it someplace besides the big box stores?" Um, just lots of people sharing places where they can get stuff and, um, so it's a cool site to do that. Um, of course Matt Pfeifer's on there because he's on all our sites. Uh, I love you, Matt. The other site I want to recognize is the Lake Orion Cares Group and Michelle Arquette Palermo, who left those kind words for our board, is the moderator on that group along with Camille Lineback. And they are responding to tons of people that are reaching out with needs, uh, and helping to fill those needs. So that's a great place for you to go. And then the other one I'm going to share with you is the road updates. So I'll just stop with that. Um, with that, I think I can end with that one. This is where, uh, John referenced, he saw the update about Gregory Road. And if you don't follow this page, this is a great place to follow. Um, you can see, uh, regularly, we regularly post updates. Obviously, if it's things that pertain, uh, to the entire township, we'll put that on our township page and our website as well. Uh, but some of the smaller, um, projects we put on there. Some of you will be pleased to know that last week Walden Road was resurfaced between Baldwin and Jocelyn, kind of a little bonus, uh, project. And also, great news, the final main line, uh, paving, uh, was completed last Thursday on Baldwin Road. There is some patching, there's all the curbs have to go in, uh, but that road project is ahead of schedule, ahead of the new schedule. Uh, so that's great news as well. Uh, I lied, there is one last thing. The most important thing you can do is two things. Thank the frontline heroes. Lake Orion Community Schools has this great page of all of the LOC S graduates that are on the front line. You'll see some of our firefighters, some of our nurses. There's Carol St. Henry, um, Lake Orion mom and wife of our planning commissioner, Joe St. Henry. So, cool place to, uh, to get, uh, Chris Hagan, uh, recognize that. But check this out, guys. Here's the census data right here, hot off the presses. Latest update as of, uh, about two hours ago. Orion Township is at 79.9%, which is amazing, it's awesome, we're doing great. You can see where we stacked up on this graph of all of the municipalities in southeast Michigan. However, the bad news, 79.9% for Orion, Oxford, 81.2%, Rochester Hills, 80.1%. So we gotta catch up, um, get the word out, nudge your friends, nudge your neighbors. Um, it's not just. Um, it's not just a fun competition that we're having with our neighbors and friends and siblings. Uh, it really, really matters. It's how all of our revenue, uh, that's every piece of revenue we get, except for the property taxes, but anything that comes from the state or federal government goes through that formula. And we're not trying to inflate it, but we just want to make sure that everyone is counted, so please, please, please do that. Help us, um, secure more funding for our community for the next decade. And please like those pages on Facebook, Stand By L O. Let's get our businesses open safely. I agree with you, Bernie and Mr. Flood, um, that we need to really think about. We appreciate the big boxes. They support our community as well, but these small mom and pops and the small businesses, um, are really, really going to need our support, so if that can be your focus for the next, uh, six months or so, that would really help everyone. I appreciate you, um, coming back, all of you that came back in. Thanks, Ian. In advance for, uh, editing us right smoothly into our board comments, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:14 PM.
So moved.
Blood and steel, all in favor. Aye?
Aye.
I feel like you jerked on me, but I'm still here. Yes, 7-0. We are adjourned at, uh, 9:14. Thanks, everybody. Great meeting.